For a later date and to schedule, had some scheduling conflicts there.
Yeah, I have an addition.
Alright.
I'd like to add an agenda item, just for city discussion in general.
City discussion in general?
Yes.
Where would you like that?
Uh, city manager, where would you like to put that?
Is, is there any specific, I mean, are we just having a free flowing conversation or?
Well, essentially, yeah, but, uh, you can put it down near the end, it's, it's fine, it's not. Whatever you see fit. I guess new business. Alright, that's fine.
What's, what's the item on side?
Ten A.
Ten A.
What's the title of the addition?
Councilman Karn, what's the title?
Uh, city business.
Is there any additional specificity you can give to that?
Uh, well, city direction, I guess, more or less, is the best way I can describe it.
Can you give us some context of what, what do you want to talk about?
The direction this city's headed in.
Any other additions, deletions, amendments, or changes? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Alright, thank you gentlemen, that is unanimous. Presentation of the minutes from regular session for March 21st, is there a motion?
So moved, as presented.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen, that is unanimous. Item 3B, workshop session from March 21st, is there a motion?
I move to approve, as we received the changed version, the updated version. I got all my comments in, I don't know whether others had comments that went into that or not, but, uh, so I'm good, so I move to approve as for the copy we got accepted.
I'll sing it.
Okay, Councilman Clay moved to approve it, is there a second from Councilman Allen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen. Alright, so we're moving on to proclamations, resolutions, plaques, and announcements. Items 4A and 4B have been removed. Um, item 4C is a presentation, a presentation of a proclamation to Ms. Mercedes Miller for her outstanding performance during her term as interim city manager for the city of College Park. Item 4D is recognition of the College Park Recreation Boys and Girls, Georgia Recreational Parks Association State Champions and Runner-Up. And item 4E is presentation of a proclamation designating April 2022 as Cleanup Month in the city of College Park. So we will go down this way to handle all three. Alright. First one is for Ms. Miller, would you like to join us? Whereas, we recognize Ms. Mercedes Miller for her exemplary skills in management, city government, and her ability to adapt quickly and accept the challenges before her. And whereas, with nearly thirty-five years of hospitality experience and twenty-six years of service with the city of College Park, Ms. Miller's passion lies at the helm of the Georgia International Convention Center and Gateway Center Arena, where her success is indisputable. Ms. Miller is the first woman of color to direct both a significant convention center and arena in a major market. And whereas, Ms. Miller has been recognized for her leadership within the hospitality industry by the International Association of Venue Management, where she is a member of the Board of Trustees. She has been an honoree of the Atlanta Business Chronicle's Who's Who, top one hundred leaders in Atlanta's hospitality industry amongst other awards. And whereas, Ms. Miller has worn several hats in just the last two years. Moving from the Georgia International Convention Center and the Global Gateway Center Arena as Executive Director, to interim HR Director in 2020 for a short term, and ascending to the interim city manager position January 1st, 2021 until February 20th, 2022. And whereas, during her time as interim city manager, Ms. Miller's stewardship allowed the city to confront the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic head-on, while improving employees' access to affordable healthcare, discovering, mentoring, and developing talent within the organization. And whereas, Ms. Miller's dedication to the city of College Park is unparalleled, and we are forever grateful for her willingness to serve. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council of the city of College Park recognize Ms. Mercedes Miller for her extraordinary performance as interim city manager, proclaimed this 21st day of March, 2022. And now, I think we got some champions in the house. Whereas, the College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Recreation Basketball Program season ran from December 2021 to March of 2022, servicing over three hundred youth during the season. Whereas, on March 4th through 5th, 2022, the city of College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Girls and Boys Basketball Recreation Program participated in the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association State Youth Basketball Tournaments across the state of Georgia. Whereas, the city of College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Department had a total of seven teams of both girls and boys to compete in the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association State Youth Basketball Tournaments. Whereas, the College Park Recreation Youth Basketball Program won state youth championships in the eight and under boys. Those players, Shane. Woo, yes. And if you are here when I start calling your name, go ahead, come on up. Shane Gordon Jr. Braylon Kern. Jordan Davenport. Aiden Johnson. Spencer Burge. Johan Oliver. And Hassan Abdul Salam. Coaches Yulton McGee and Shane Gordon Sr. I got a lot more to read in this proclamation.
If the parents want to come down, come on down, get your picture. Come on down, parents.
Congratulations. But we're not done, because we've got more champions. Whereas, the College Park Recreation Youth Basketball Program won state youth championships in the ten and under major boys. Players, come on down, Trent Adams. Grayson Barnett. Chase Mills. Okay, David Whitaker. Christian Van Dorn. Jamal Oliver. Congratulations. Trenton Meredith. Carter Pulley. Congratulations. And Wardell Strickland Jr. And their coach is Emmanuel Rainey Jr.
Okay, group, looking back right here for me now. One more time.
Whereas, the College Park Recreation Youth Basketball Program won state youth championships in the fourteen and under boy, boys. Players Trey Keith III. Charles Matthews. Kalen Stevenson. Avon Florence. Brent Williams. Evan Harvey. Justin Page Jr. Jamari Russo. And Alex Jones. Coaches Reginald Fuller and Aurelius Johnson.
Back to back to back.
Group on the back, step this way just a little bit, we've actually got people taller than the mayor.
Wait, oh, oh, okay, so, members of the fourteen U team, Charles Matthews, Trey Keith III, and Kalen Stevenson leave College Park Recreation Youth Basketball, winning four GRPA state championships. And they've all been with the program since the age of five. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of College Park that the College Park Youth Basketball Program is recognized for their hard work, their dedication, and accomplishments as Georgia Recreation and Parks Association State Champions in the state of Georgia. And so before we move to the next proclamation, I just want to say, uh, thank you to the, our Director of Recreation and Cultural Arts, Michelle Johnson, and her entire team for all of their hard work. And we want one big old group photo? That's okay, no, no problem at all, let's do it. Come on champions, come on down one more time.
College Park going three, one, two, three.
Now depending on your age, you get excited about different things. And as exciting as the performance of our youth is, I'm actually really excited about Cleanup Month, I'm gonna be honest. It's a great time in the city of College Park. So, we will give them a little bit of time to clear out. Alrighty. Got our Public Works folks here for a proclamation for April Cleanup Month. Whereas, during the month of April, the city of College Park recognizes that illegal dumping in the city is a major problem. In an effort to beautify, unify, keep our community safe, clean, and to discourage illegal dumping, residents are allowed to dispose of many household items without having to pay collection fees. Whereas, College Park Department of Public Works Sanitation Division will pick up the following items free of charge: furniture, appliances, and tires. These items will be picked up curbside during regular scheduled collection days. Whereas, on April 23rd, 2022, during April Cleanup Month, we will also conduct our annual hazardous, oops, Household Hazardous Waste and Shred It Day. College Park residents will have the opportunity to properly dispose of household hazardous waste materials like paint, solvents, pesticides, personal and sensitive documents. This will help reduce illegal dumping and assist the Public Works Sanitation Division to continue protecting the environment and community with effective solid waste practices. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council, as we do hereby recognize and declare April 2022 as April Cleanup Month, we call upon our citizens and staff to join in these activities in support of nationwide Great America Cleanup that promotes responsible environmental stewardship and helps us renew our commitment to building a better world today and for future generations. Proclaim this 21st day of March, 2022. And let me just say that we do have the best Public Works Department anywhere, anywhere. And so, and then they go above and beyond that for the month of April, when we put out anything and everything. And so, we could not be more thankful for the work that you do on a daily basis to keep our city beautiful and clean and safe, and all the work that you do to just look out for us, because you're there twice a week. Nobody else is there twice a week, no, nobody's got that around. And, and we don't, we don't take that lightly and appreciate all of your efforts. Alright, we moved on to remarks of citizens, Ms. Moore? Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Ames.
Okay, I have the first comment from Jalandra Taylor to discuss Ignite. Second one is Jamel McKenzie to discuss Ignite, so that's a total of six minutes.
Greetings everyone, I had a minute the last meeting, so I came back to make sure I could get this in today. I just want to say, good evening again to mayor, council, our city manager, and all our distinguished heads of departments today. Um, my name is Jamel McKenzie, and I live here in the city of College Park in the Link subdivision. And I also run the Ignite Resource Center. I wanted to kind of give you a, an update on some of the things that Ignite has been able to do, uh, the first few months of this year, we're really excited. Uh, I think, as I mentioned the last meeting, but I'll say it again, that during the month of February, our Ignite Read to Succeed Family Literacy Project held a Black History Month Book Drive. And we were able to collect hundreds of books that were donated by members of the community, as well as through our partnership with the College Park Skyhawks. We're really excited about this project, uh, which will continue throughout the rest of the year. This project will put books directly into the hands of our youth, adults, and senior citizens. We're currently working with all four of our council members to select apartment communities throughout the city, where we're going to be holding book festivals again with our partners, the College Park Skyhawks and the Police Department here in our city. Uh, and these will be held throughout the spring at different communities throughout the city. We're also going to be giving special incentives, uh, to encourage adults and children to read. Because as we know, reading is a valuable component of succeeding, and that's why we call our program Read to Succeed. We were also given the privilege, um, to honor over a hundred seniors in College Park, a hundred plus seniors in College Park at the College View Hills and Princeton Court residences on Valentine's Day. Councilman Allen, uh, was with us at Princeton Court. And, uh, we will be sharing this love again with approximately two hundred seniors during Easter week. In fact, while we were at one of the sites, they asked, are you coming back for Easter? We were like, yes, we'll be back, so, we're coming back for Easter. Um, a few weeks ago, Ignite received a donation of almost sixty thousand masks, thanks to our partnerships with Aetna and Project U First. And we've already distributed over thirty thousand of these masks throughout the community to schools, to organizations, institutions, even the arena and the GICC. We have several other exciting programs and partnerships. We have several other exciting programs and partnerships that we will be sharing over the next few weeks such as our SOE Women's Clothing Closet, our G Wealth Financial Literacy Project, our Birthright by Legacy Academy for teen innovators, leaders, and entrepreneurs, and much, much more. We're very excited about the impact that the Ignite Center has been able to make and the support that we have received from our council and from the citizens of College Park. And together, we are creating a village where every person can thrive. And at this time, I also would like to introduce the newest addition to our Ignite team. She's my executive assistant and her name is Jelandra Taylor. Has been a part of this community for a long time and we're really happy to have her onboard. Again, thank you for the opportunity to serve. We've got our sleeves rolled up and we're looking forward to more this year. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Okay, the next comment comes from Mr. Walker. And he's going to yield his three minutes to Tracy Wyatt. So Tracy Wyatt, you're up next to discuss responses and police.
Good evening, distinguished mayor and council. Councilman Gay, I hope that your colleagues get your support. It's high past time we do something to camp true it. So, I hope they support you in that venture. And I know there was some kind of Georgia economic development thing went on this weekend. They were talking about some grants that they had available. So, that might be something you can look into. I received a text from Ms. Mary Shellfield while I was sitting. And she wanted you all to know that she was at Emory University Hospital and that she would appreciate the prayers of the College Park community as she go through her physical difficulties. City manager, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for deciding to come and be a monster. We appreciate that. I just have a question. It was brought to my attention that we have some kind of policy that citizens come and ask questions before council, that council don't respond. Is that some kind of policy?
I don't know of a policy.
We don't respond to public comment while people are commenting. But go right ahead.
Okay, so I, I don't, I'd like to know where that came from. I mean, I, I would think that comments that the governing body don't respond to citizens' comment, I think is relatively disheartening. I mean, where do they, where do they come from? Well, I know council, I don't know where that came from. I haven't seen anything in a minute where there was a policy that council don't respond to citizens. I mean, I know nowhere in the world that someone don't respond to their bosses and the people who pay their salary. I, I just, I don't get that. I know we adopted a policy that we wouldn't vote on issues coming for a public comment, but we never passed anything that said that we wouldn't comment. And I would hope that the person I voted for and served me that I paid for would never tell me he wouldn't respond to my comments, that citizens' comments. And so, I don't know. Councilman Allen, is that a policy that you adopted?
I'm not aware of a policy. I think there have been some comments in the past. I know there's no voting, but I know Councilman Clay, you make comments at the end sometimes?
Yeah, I, I did answer one of the comments at the last.
You might, Councilman Clay, can hold it.
Oh, sorry. I did answer one of the comments from the last meeting in my report later on. I think if there's anything that it grew out of was not wanting to get into a dialogue back and forth. On occasion, we have answered, somebody has said, "Well, we'll get back to you." I think the mayor has said that on some things. But a, a simple answer to a question, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But what we don't, I think, want to do is get into a back and forth. Well, I answer you and then you come back to me and then I go back and forth. And I think that's what it probably grew out of.
You're absolutely correct, sir.
And then your three minutes are gone, but I don't, I don't have a problem responding back.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. I'm glad to know that that's not a policy and that citizens can come in their house, in their public meeting, and ask the question and get it answered. The second thing I want to talk about is police. I think we gotta get creative when it comes to policing. I, I think the first thing we gotta do is try to retain our police officers. And obviously, one of the major issues is pay. And I hear we would never win the pay war. And, and maybe we won't. But, but I think there are some things we can do a little bit better as far as pay raises, as far as bonuses, as far as take-home cars. Because it's all about morale. And people all know that they can come and work for this city and stay for this city and have the opportunity to advance. Be that from lieutenant to major, or be that from major to deputy chief, or be that from deputy chief to the permanent chief. I saw there was an item on the agenda about a search firm. I think we had the finest deputy chief that could be a police chief that any city could ever have. And it's disappointing that we don't recognize and support and give our, show our respect to people who stay here and that's qualified to do the job. I think that's atrocious. I think we gotta do something to, to retain our police officers. You know, I, I find it difficult to say this because as a union representative for many years, I understand the value of a pension. But we gotta meet people where they are. And today's young generation don't care about a pension. They want their money upfront because they're no longer working twenty and thirty years at a job. And so, I would hope that someday y'all would look at whether or not, as most cities do. Very few cities now have a pension. But they're paying their police officers six, seven dollars more an hour and that's where the police officers are going. So I submit to you that if we're gonna retain our police officers or attract new, younger officers, we need to look at that, that, that policy and see if we can't do a little bit about looking at a 401K. Now, as a thirty-something-year employee in the postal service, I understand the power of a pension. But we gotta meet people where they are today. And today, they want their money right now because they know thirty, they not gonna be in the policing business in thirty years. And I, I would hope that we something that, that council would take a look at. You know, and, and hopefully we can get enough cars to incentivize these people, the ones we got, to retain them. And I think take-home cars is a very good incentive as well. So, so that's all. I just want to thank you and I'm glad I clarified the policy that council don't respond because that was very disturbing. And I hope that we show respect to the people that have been here for a long time and let them know that they stay in the good job. They can get promoted.
Ms. Ames?
Thank you.
Next I have, I believe Johnny Walker?
Williams.
I'm sorry, Williams.
Glad to see you out.
Well, thank you. I came here about homestead taxes. They say you were working on that now, so.
Ma'am, would you be able to just pull down the microphone so everyone can hear you? Thank you so much.
I'm here about homestead taxes for the seniors. But they say they are working on that now. So, we are here also about speed breakers. And I was said, I've been calling the police about how they speeding down Lyle Road. It's all day and all night. At three o'clock in the morning, they are speeding those fast cars. They go about, they, it lasts about two hours every time they come through. And we need more speed bumps. We have one and that's it.
We have one that's right in front of our house. I'm in the reverse swelling. And there's cops, and there's, and there's cars coming all hours of the day. They're going fifty, sixty miles an hour. Going as fast as they can from Washington all the way through to, to the stop sign at Harris.
Sir, what is your name for the record?
I'm sorry, I'm Robert Wolf. Sorry, I'm the one that's next.
Okay.
But I just wanted to, just to see. I was riding down Herschel today and there were three speed bumps at three or four. And they were all filled in. And I wanted to see if we could even consider that going down Lyle and even down Rugby. Because it's, it's, it's non-stop. It's awful.
At our meeting, two meetings ago, we approved, I believe, two new speed bumps on Lyle.
And, and the first, the first one of the asphalt speed bumps went in, in front of the house right next to mine at two thousand Lyle. I'm at two thousand Lyle, so it was right nineteen ninety-six Lyle. And there are a lot more coming.
Yeah, good. That's wonderful to hear.
And also, the police need to ride more in our neighborhood. They can come and see, they could make money riding tickets.
We're hoping the speed bumps, we don't need it. That's good news.
So, Bumbu, we hear something about the speed bumps.
Well, like I said, the first one, we approved a batch of eighteen throughout the city. Not just in more than one.
I'm speaking of our street.
On, on, on our street?
On Lyle Road where we live. That's what I'm thinking of.
We have, we have one more coming on Lyle, down by Delo Street. And we have some coming on, on Rugby. And several other areas in.
There's one coming on Temple, one coming on Hawthorne. There's one coming on Walker. There's one coming on Cambridge. I know in, in our area.
And we're, we're filling in all the speed bumps as far as I know at this point. Because they were riding the center line and, and cutting through them. So, the one next to me is kind of the test case, I think. Because it's gonna be interesting to see. There are two things that are gonna happen. One, it's gonna slow the response time of emergency vehicles. We talked about that. The second thing is that you're going to have people who are aggravated by it, who want to cut through the city, who don't live here, who want to blow through the stop signs at sixty miles an hour, which is what they do. And they will, when they hit that speed bump, they're gonna get very upset and they're going to gun the engine like all get out. So, those of us who live near the speed bump, that's one reason why I've got one near me. I want to see what it's like to be next to a speed bump. And it's gonna be potentially noisier for those right near it.
Hopefully in the short term.
We don't have a choice. We don't have enough patrol cars on the street.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good seeing you again, Ms. Williams.
Okay, Robert Wolf was next, but he already spoke. Next we have Trenton Meredith Senior to discuss state basketball champs.
I think, I think he left.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Next we have Meredith Hodges to discuss BIDA.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Meredith Hodges. I spoke at the last city council meeting about the concern that I had related to BIDA and the Affordable Housing Project. I, along with the leaders at College Park Methodist, had been under the impression for the last couple of years that the sale of the BIDA lot had been approved. And as such, I could not understand why Jamelle McKenzie had refused to sign the contract that we had been given. It has come to my attention that the sale was not officially voted upon two years ago and that Jamelle was acting appropriately in not signing the contract. So I would like to offer my very sincere apologies to Jamelle for falsely accusing her of holding up the sale. I am most grateful that the BIDA board unanimously voted to approve the sale and our Affordable Housing Project will close now on May the twenty-third. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ames?
I have no others that signed in. Oh, I'm sorry. I have one that emailed. Restart my timer. Okay, it reads, "Hello, mayor and council. I am Dennis Ames Adams of Embarkadero Club Apartments located at twenty-two ten Sullivan Road in Ward Two. I'm hearing talk around the city that we have or will be getting hiring a new assistant city manager." Okay, I guess. "But I've been here in a little over ten years and I've never heard of this position and wonder why do we need it now considering we are post-pandemic lockdown status? And we are desperately in need of recovering monies to make our city thrive. How does this position trump getting new police equipment or raising salaries so folks can pay this high rent we are being faced to, being faced with? When are people going to get straightforward answers in real time versus having to wait and hear from the grapevine or days after everything has been decided and just thrust upon us to accept? Another thing, I don't know if this is something you handle, but with all this new development coming, how do we stop this market rate from killing our pockets? As I've said, our rents keep going up and the paychecks are not. Embarkadero Club is going to raise my rent two hundred and fifty-five dollars on my next leasing cycle, which starts April first. What can we do to stop this or who do we need to talk to? Thank you for your time, Dennis Adams." And I have no others.
Thank you, Ms. Ames. At this time, we'll take folks who want to speak for one minute. Mr. Willis?
Hello, mayor and council. City manager, nice to meet you this weekend. I'm gonna be hopefully a little bit over a minute to say what I have to say. I wasn't planning on saying this, but like I said, a lot of times I have to go with my heart. First, I like said, mayor and council, hello, how you doing? The police department, I have to say about public safety. I wasn't planning on talking about it tonight. I spoke to the mayor and city manager this past weekend. That's very close and dear to my heart, public safety. And like they did speak over the weekend, we're not going to win the BDA war. I'm not gonna repeat what former councilman Wyatt said. It is unacceptable, I said it then, I'm standing now on the record, that we are not doing better, taking care of our officers, not promoting our inner officers. I've been here forty-two years, long in the U. And public safety is the most important thing in this city. Besides our youth. And I hope and pray, she says she was working on it. I believe she is. She knew here. So I feel she is doing that. But.
Would you like to, would Ms. Willis like to speak for a minute?
Excuse me, can I continue?
Yes.
Yes.
Fine with me.
Okay, so, I'm continuing. Alright. Just one moment, a couple more seconds on this. Also, chief, and I said this, and I said this with great sincerity. I don't know how no one can expect you to do your job when you don't have enough employees. It's not anybody's fault. All the cities are that way. I know that. But we gotta show some compassion for public safety. And what I, DeMille said earlier, we have a great Public Works Department. I know, all summer, and I wasn't even gonna bring it up. We gave thousands and thousands of pounds of food during the pandemic for the last year and a half. I didn't come up here and talk about that, but I just want to bring that up because I appreciate what Public Works does for this, this city. And I'm gonna get off of that because I can go on. So very quickly, I'm gonna come, while I come before y'all to speak. Congratulations to Michelle Lance, Kirkland, Brian, Chris, Quaid, and all the other people that work in the Recreation Department. We have a great Recreation Department, as you see. We just celebrated tonight. I did not know they was doing this tonight. Also, I cannot forget to say, it is so great to work with them as running the parking rec, track of youth. Thank you, Councilman Clay. Thank you, Councilman Korn. Thank you, Councilman Allen, for coming out on Sunday, taking your time and coming out. We had over three hundred athletes that was there, over almost six hundred participants, uh, family members to come out. From all over, from Stone Mountain, all the way from Griffin. So it was a big deal that, and you know what everyone told me? He said, "Oh, my goodness. I didn't know College Park looked like this." I'm gonna tell you, I want to come back here. This was significant. I valued it so much. And I said, "What's about the mayor?" Well, I'm gonna say the mayor because I feel she had came in and contributed. But definitely the council that I know personally that has been a part of contributing to the youth since I've been here and involved. I've got thirty more seconds on this. These are the trophies that we was giving out. We had eight that we gave out. Out of the eight, we won five. And the overall trophy, over three hundred kids, we won top performer over top team. And that was a big deal. And so I want to say thank you again to Recreation Department. Michelle, as I said earlier, thank you, council, for coming out. But I do pray that y'all continue supporting Recreation Department. Because when you do that, it goes right back to public safety. If you take care of the youth coming up and keep them. If you take care of the youth coming up and keep them off the street, then they're not being jailed or breaking someone's guard. And so that's what I want to say, thank you very much. Council, I only take twenty minutes.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak for one minute?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council members, my name is Erica Evans. I'm a native of College Park and I currently reside in College Park. I'm a graduate of Woodward Academy and a school record holder in track and field at Coastal Carolina University. I come before you this evening to, to thank, to acknowledge, and to celebrate the work of Coach Rex Willis and Sabrina Willis and the entire Georgia Favor and Favor Fee Organization for instilling in foundational values of hard work, character development, and accomplishment in myself and also the other youth in the city of College Park. For reminding us that it does not matter where we come from nor where we start, but it is about the journey and the hard work that it takes to get to where we ultimately want to go. And having been touched by their purposeful and passionate hands myself, I am extraordinarily thankful to the entire Georgia Favor Organization for transforming the lives of the youth of the city of College Park to become extraordinary leaders and that serve in a multitude of great capacities across the nation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to greet you all tonight in the greetings of peace and understanding. Some of you all here know me, some of you all don't. Some of you all will, and some of you all won't. But my name is Larry Brady Evans. I reside at twenty-one twelve West Princeton Avenue, College Park, Georgia. Where I've been a citizen of College Park since nineteen hundred and fifty-nine. And I'd just like to say I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. And at this point in College Park, I see a new spirit coming into the city. And I applaud that. And I applaud the city, you mayor, city council, newly elected city officials. I got to go longer than one minute. But.
Give you thirty more seconds. Can you get it in?
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll come back next time and sign in for three minutes and get somebody else to come with me in their three minutes.
That, that is fine. That is, that is fine.
Because I want you to hear what I do have to say. But Brother Gay, I want to thank you, Councilman. You've been one of the brightest lights of African-American councilmen to serve in the city of College Park. That's where I stand from where you sit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for one minute? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, one more, okay.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, hello, hello.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Sabrina Willis, but I'm coming because my baby, my grandbaby, Aria Sabrina Willis wants to say a few words. I'm going to lift her up and allow her that opportunity.
My name is Aria Sabrina. I love to run track. I like to run fast and make new friends at, at the track meet. I like to do everything that God want me to do.
Thank you.
My name is Kim Jackson and this is my daughter Ashley Jackson. And I want to tell you that this Favor team is special because Ashley is in a little pain. But she came to give a word on what she feels about the track team in importance. Go ahead.
My name is Ashley Jackson and I live in the Lynx neighborhood. And I just want to say that I love the Favor track team because they put all the teammates to work and they help us get better. And in my opinion, they structure our personality, uh, they structure our personalities as a person. And our team treats us like the same no matter the age, our race, or our gender. And, uh, to me, Favor is a hard-working, supportive track team, and I'd love to run more with them.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for one minute? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to other business. Item six A is consideration of an action on a request to approve an inter, to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Fulton County Board of Elections and Registration for Provisions of Election Services for the May twenty-fourth, twenty-two special, twenty-twenty-two special election. Any questions for Ms. Moore?
Ames.
Ah, gosh darn it, I'm so sorry. Ms. Ames.
Ms. Ames, hello, Ms. Ames.
Councilman Allen, was there a motion?
I moved to approve.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second with discussion.
Uh, all right, I heard Councilman Korn first. Go ahead.
Ms. Ames, uh, one thing I want you to check with Fulton County Elections, uh, the last time I went on the website, their precinct poll locator map, uh, directory, not the map, but it's, it's still outdated. There's polls that have changed over. I'm hoping they've changed that. And I'm assuming they'll have the early voting sites together where they're going to be, um, for this upcoming, uh, primary. So I don't know how soon they come out with that if they haven't already, but, uh, just make sure you get it to us so we know. We didn't get the library the last time, and, uh, we, we did get East Point. But I'm hoping maybe we get College Park again this time, so, all right, thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor. Thank you, gentlemen. Heard all four of you. That is unanimous. Item six B is consideration of an action on a request by College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Department in partnership with the Marquise Grissom Baseball Association for a food truck at Richard D. Zup Park on Saturday, April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, for a fun day.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Here's Ms. Johnson. Any questions for her?
I moved to approve with comment.
All right, hold, hold, okay, Councilman Allen has moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Korn. Go ahead. Comment.
I just want to say, you know, Marcus Grissom does a great job. Uh, the last program he had out there, he not only works with the kids in baseball, but he tries to further their education and, and work with these kids as far as bettering themselves in school, so it's a great program. And, and thank you very much for bringing that to College Park.
We're excited. We, um, they were to be here tonight, but it is the evening and it is practice time. So they asked if I would pitch it for them this evening. Um, they've got a hundred people registered, so, and we are looking at games. Um, they wanted me to invite you to throw the first pitch.
Oh, great.
So we'll do nine o'clock, um, they'll, they'll show up and then eleven o'clock, um, for games. So we hope to see everybody out there and it'll be a great, great time.
Do I get, like, best out of three?
I would be with you on that one. But it should be a fun day, but they are doing actual games this year. I know last year with COVID, um, we didn't do games, but they're looking forward to having games this year.
Any other questions from, from Ms. Johnson? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor.
All right.
That's all four of you. That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. We generally take items sixteen and sixteen together. Uh, discussion update on the top ten delinquent utility customer accounts and delinquent property taxpayers. Ms. Florid Bradley is here to answer any of your questions.
I got all mine answered previous to the meeting, so I'm good.
Councilman Korn, any questions?
No, uh, again, those, uh, big property tax numbers are, I'm assuming we're reeling them in, hopefully?
Um, yes, there have been some updates and I can forward that information on to you.
Now, they're, they're big improvement from the previous report that we actually got with the packet. So a number of things have been cleaned up, both in utility and property management.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And I can forward that information to you as soon as I leave this.
It's like progress, though. Keep, yeah, keep going.
And the, um, just to let you know, the deadline for the intent to lien ends April first, so then we'll start filing the liens for those that are still outstanding.
So April first?
Yes, sir.
Regardless of the amount?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Any questions, Councilman Allen? No, I said any questions?
No.
No, okay. Councilman Gay?
I thought you asked for us.
Okay.
No questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Florid Bradley. Appreciate it. Item sixteen, Main Street selfie mural project. Good evening, Ms. Coakley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And what you have before you is the proposal for the image that will be added to thirty-seven nineteen Main Street, that side of the Real Milk and Honey. Um, as you can see in the mini-track item. This was a sponsored mural. Um, we had a local business after we put the first image on the wall, requested to give me some money to put another mural on that wall. And so that's what you have before you tonight is the image. It, um, you can notice in the image that the, um, business logo is included also in the image, but that was a requirement that they asked for, um, with the sponsorship, so. I know there was a question about that today, so if you have any questions, I'm here to entertain at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Coakley? We'll start with Councilman Clay.
I had asked that question and, uh, some time ago, we had made a decision on council that we would not have advertising on the murals. I think a small logo on there in the corner is, although it's advertising, it is an indication of the sponsorship. I don't have a problem with that. I don't think that's what we intended before when we said we didn't want advertising on it. But I think it is an issue that council ought to decide whether they want to allow it or not allow it. Uh, and if so, whether we should say how big it should be or what have you.
I, I don't see an issue with it as long as it's small and, you know.
And it will be, it, it, you can't really tell from the image, but the proximity of the logo versus what the size of the mural will be is no comparison, so it will be very small.
All right.
I don't, I don't have a, I gotta, you said you had permission from the owner?
Councilman Allen, hold on one second. Councilman Korn, hold on one second. Do you have any questions, Councilman Korn?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Allen.
You in here, you said you got permission from the owner. Did we get that in writing or did?
I do have it in writing. We got it initially for the, um, first mural we did, but we included the entire wall because after, um, at our Main Street Board, we decided that it would be nice to make that an art alley or art walk. And so that was included in the initial ask.
Great, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Councilman Gay, any questions?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
I moved to approve.
Is there a second? Thank you, Councilman Korn. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item six F, City Council's Authorization to Pay BIDA Legal Fees in the Amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars for the dates of January first, twenty-twenty-two to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Good evening, Mr. Jones.
Hey, good evening. Um, on this evening, I'm seeking authorization to pay an invoice in an amount of eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars for the Business and Industrial Development Authority, uh, legal fees. Uh, this particular, I guess, the month of January was a very, very busy month in that we have several, um, closings going on. A lot of legal paperwork is going back and forth. And, um, at this time, I just like authorization to pay this. This falls over the threshold that staff is, can approve.
Councilman Clay, any questions?
I, I think this is a very positive thing. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of activity going on. It's gradually becoming disclosed. Uh, I'm, I'm actually seeing this as a good thing. Spending money in this case is a very good thing, so I'm, I'm good with it. I'm happy.
Councilman Korn, any questions?
Uh, it's a good, good problem to have, I guess, we're, we're getting stuff done over there. Uh, now, is this above and beyond the, this doesn't outstretch the budget now?
No, this is within, this is within budget.
Okay, this is just a large amount. And Amber, I don't know if you remember, I guess, at, at one point, city, you know, city attorney had BIDA. And, and then we decided to add a BIDA attorney, uh, you know, on top of that. I can't remember the reason why we did that, but, um, at some point, I just want to look at all, all the expenditures, just to, you know, see if there's any savings we can find in some different places, uh. So that's just something for the future here. I guess, uh, maybe we talk about it at budget, but, uh, uh, yeah, it's money well spent, obviously. But if, if, if it's, if it's something that, you know, we can get done, if, I don't want us to have to overlap something. Whereas, you know, we got a lot of institutional knowledge with, with, uh, with Winston's firm or whatever have you, but, I don't know, at some point, I'd just like to take a look at that type of stuff. So it's tires, just, you know, maybe we talk about that one day at some point during the, uh, during the budget process. All right, but yeah, but I'm fine with it.
Councilman Allen, any questions?
I'm fine.
Councilman Gay?
Oh, no, I kind of concur. We need to start seriously dialing down on that budget and seeing where there may be some savings.
Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. We have no public hearings tonight. Item eight A is consideration of an action on a request for approval to utilize Gov HR USA consultants for a police chief national search and authorize a human resources director to extend a contract with Gov HR USA consultants with the same terms as the city's former services agreement. Madam City Manager?
Uh, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Councilman Clay, any questions?
I'm good.
Councilman Korn, any questions?
Okay, I see the, uh, not to exceed twenty-two-five is, what's your guesstimation for this in terms of getting this?
I believe it is twenty-two-five.
It's twenty-two-five. That's the, that's the.
That's the actual amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, all right, and, and I, I know we're posting this out. Uh, I hope that we're going to definitely give some indifference to, uh, any internal members, uh, staff now that want to apply for this. I have always been an advocate for looking on, uh, on the inside for new department heads wherever possible, so. I'm hoping we got some good qualified folks that might want to step up to the plate. Because I sure would like to see, um, someone that's paying into this system and dedicated, uh, years to this city. You know, have the first opportunities when opens, the openings come up like this for department heads, so I just want to say that for the record.
Councilman Allen, any questions?
Yeah, I agree. I wish, I hope we take a, take a close look at, at the people we have, uh, in-house, uh, as well. But that's the only, only comment I have.
Councilman Gay?
No, no comment.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Gay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item eight, item eight B is consideration of an action, a consideration of an request for approval of a proposal from Aquatic Management for Lifeguard Services in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Ms. Johnson is here to answer any questions on this item. Councilman Clay, do you have any?
I had a bunch. I got them all answered. Liked the answers. I'm good.
Councilman Korn?
I'm fine.
Councilman, Councilman Allen?
I as well. Thank you for answering my question today. We, the only question, how much is the liability insurance? Do we, did we ever find out how much?
I did check with, um, purchasing and it will not change our liability insurance. We still have to insure the.
We still have to do that?
Yes, I did follow up on that, so I apologize for not getting right back to you on that.
Okay.
Councilman Gay, any questions?
Uh, Ms. Johnson, will that also cover, uh, still those parts?
Yes, cover the attendant for the splash pack. Yes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Korn. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any pose, any abstentions? All right, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight C is consideration of an action on a request for approval to renew the existing golf carts lease agreement with Yamaha Motor Finance Corporation. I believe Ms. Miller brought this forward. Is there, are there any questions for Ms. Miller? Councilman Clay?
I'm good.
Councilman Korn?
I'm fine.
Councilman Allen?
I, do we have any idea how much money we make on the carts, uh, per year?
I do not. This is just an extension of a, a lease that we already had in place since twenty-twenty.
Okay, two leases, or, two leases, okay.
Councilman Gay?
Uh, no questions. I, I would like for the golf carts to be available for non-golf programs. There are opportunities where we can use them when we have events for the seniors, things like that.
Okay, we have to check on the insurance because I know someone else wanted to use them and if they're off the golf course, they're not insurable. So we have to get extra insurance.
I, I remember Mercedes, when we first were talking about that a year or two ago, that, uh, that was a question that I brought up because the contract, I think it said they could only be used on the golf course, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Korn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Item eight D is consideration of an action on a request for approval of bids received to perform street resurfacing work under the Georgia Department of Transportation, twenty-twenty-two Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, program. Recommendation is for. The recommendation is for H-E-H paving as the lowest bidder in the amount of two hundred three thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars, six cents. Ms. Akavaria is here to answer any questions. Councilman Clay, do you have any?
I'm good.
Councilman Korn?
Is this outfit H-E-H, are they here?
No.
You know, a lot of the times, you know, you know, do we invite, I mean, I know we used to ask these companies to come here when, when we, if we're approving their bids and whatnot, when it's a significant amount of money. I'll just tell you for one, I, I like to see these folks. I think a lot of the time, we ask them questions and we see them, we end up getting a better accountability from these outfits. And I, for one, you know, I really want to see these outfits, no matter who they are, when they're, when, 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 when we're giving our money to them. Seems like they know what they're doing, I'm assuming, and one of my questions I had was, is this gonna be able to coincide with the speed humps? And, and how soon, when, when are we planning on doing those?
So we started, um, today. We started.
Oh, okay, all right.
So we're definitely waiting now to, on the signs, because the goal is to have the signs in place before we put the speed bumps in. I know, I believe we have a street that we have a speed bump scheduled for. We're gonna wait until it's resurfaced.
Okay.
And then do the speed bump on top. No point in doing it before, because they would have to mill it down.
Right, right, right. And, and these outfits would start thirty days from the signing of the contract, according to this.
Yeah, so with COVID, we got kind of behind with the local maintenance improvement grant opportunity, and so we are catching up. So I definitely will do a public information campaign when we know that we have everything on schedule to start, because we're catching up from last year and also this year. So we're gonna have a busy spring for milling and resurfacing the roads and the streets in College Park.
I, I know the one we have on Cambridge for Ward One, the street we have does not have any speed hump scheduled for it in that area.
No.
Oh, great. So, so, so we sign this thing, and so I guess by the end of April, they, they get, they get going?
That's the goal. I will definitely give you a follow-up with some specific dates. It's, we're really waiting for weather. It can't be raining, and we need a good amount of a sixty-degree-ish kind of seventy-degree weather is what we're hoping for.
Okay, so that sounds good. And again, Ms. City Manager, I, I want to hear from these organizations when they, when they're, when we're looking at voting on them. You know, the, the idea behind that is this. I've seen companies that get pretty significant bids from the city of College Park. Problem is, they don't even bother to come up here when their bid is being deliberated on. And I say to myself, you know, past a certain dollar amount, you know, if it's not important enough for you to come up here in case we got some questions, how important is it for me to vote on you if you, if you don't take out the time to come up here to see if there are any questions? This is important to me. And I know we're a tiny little city here in College Park, but it's a big deal to us. And it may not be a lot of money for these outfits. They may have bigger projects elsewhere, but I want to see them here, and I want to hear from them, and I want to make sure that they understand the type of job we expect. And I think, again, that, you know, really allows for them to be held a little bit more accountable when they see us face-to-face and they know our expectations, so. Thank you so much, though. I appreciate it.
Madam City Manager, did you want to?
I actually would just want to have the council give me some guidance on sensible threshold.
I know I talked about a number before, when we had someone, and I, I said, you know, my thing, anything north of two hundred thousand dollars, I think it's worth coming in here. And, you know, if you can't take the time to come in here and it's not, doesn't mean that much to you, well, it might not mean that much to me.
Is that the will of the body?
I thought, was Hawthorne on the list at one time, or?
Yes, so what we do is we provide a list of streets to you, and based off of what we're granted, we select from that to see how much we can get done. And these are the list, this list of the three streets that we can get done for the one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars that was granted to us from the grant program.
So if Hawthorne's not on here this year, we need to make sure that it gets on there.
Correct. The list doesn't go away. We will apply for additional funds for next year.
Okay. Not one for Ward Three, so I get two next year.
And then I can get.
Absolutely.
Councilman Gay, any questions?
But I can send you an updated list from the local maintenance, what has been done, what is pending, and what we're scheduled to do, so we, you'll have a running list of what we.
Oh, that would be great. Yeah, thanks.
Councilman Gay, any questions?
I don't, but have anyone made a motion?
No, not yet. I have a question. Is, is it the will of the body to have all contracts north of two hundred thousand dollars have the actual approved or the recommended contractor come in here with?
I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a very good idea. Lets them know we're serious, and I, I agree with Joe on the accountability aspect of it.
All right.
Melissa, one other thing. You know, I've noticed in some of my other cities in Fulton County, when they have the recommended street list, a lot of times, you know, and this, the list used to be a lot longer, you know, every year, but when, when we had resurfacing. Obviously, there was a lot of jostling between council members and wards and districts in all, all the cities. Everybody's fighting to get as many of their streets paved as possible. One thing I did notice from a municipality which was, which was pretty good, I thought, in terms of fairness, in addition to the streets, they had the linear feet of that street. In other words, you may have three, four streets that are getting paved, but one may only be, you know, seven hundred feet, whereas the other one's twenty-five hundred, for, for instance. And, you know, in terms of bang for our buck, it'd just be, it's just a good, another good metric to have if we have it, you know, so just FYI.
We can do that moving forward.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Gay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. City Direction, item ten A.
So I, I wanted to take a minute just to kind of talk about some of the things I see going on in this city. For the most part, we're doing a good job. But, you know, I've been away for a while, and, you know, I come back and I, I see some changes. Some of these changes are pretty slight and pretty subtle, but a lot of these changes, I got some issues with. And I believe some of us up on this council may also have some issues with. You know, like any city, College Park, you know, it's a government entity. You know, a lot of people consider it a paramilitary organization, government. And we have, I guess, in that stance, we got a lot of dedicated soldiers out here working hard for us, and, you know, they're accomplishing plenty of jobs in, in all the different divisions and departments. And I guess by that ranking, reckoning, you can consider us, I guess, I guess, leadership or generals or whatever have you. But, you know, unlike our federal counterparts, you know, nobody up here outranks anybody else. And I say this because I've been seeing some issues that are going on here in terms of city structure and leadership. Now, some of y'all aren't aware of this, but one of the reasons I wanted to have this in public too is because I wanted, wanted our staff to hear this. This is a council-manager form of government. That means, unlike the city of Atlanta, this body does the deliberation and legislation and makes a decision. Now, in other cities, you have a legislative body and you have a strong mayor system. And at the end of the day, the mayor sets the tone, the mayor sets the guidance, and the mayor up or downs the council decisions. That's not in this city. And bottom line, what I have seen since I've been back and before I returned, there's been an ongoing effort to silence this city council in many, many, many ways. It's been a continuing effort to reduce the voice of this elected body, and it's been very subtle, very gradual, as an attempt to reduce access to this city council for information, circumventing the concept of the College Park City Council itself. And some of us may not have a clue of what we're talking about here, but I believe that everyone up here is well aware of it. The only question is, what should we do about it? Because, you know, I, I've seen this game played for years in municipalities throughout Georgia, throughout the southeastern United States. I guess I just took for granted that it could never happen here. But folks, it's happening here, and it is plain enough to see. Last thing I'll talk about is, you know, this is about access, information, and communication. We have a very strange communication issue in this city. Department heads are afraid to talk to each other. I was over at the police department today, and one staff member said that, you know, the climate we have right now, the police department is afraid to go over to HR to talk about something. And they, they, they coined it a great term. She said, th, th, this person said, "Family fracture," and that's what she described it as. This is a family in that sense. And I, and speaking for myself, I want y'all to know something. No staff member or department head should be afraid to speak with a city council member, because we are just citizens. We're just citizens. And from our purview, we're the citizens that care the most about our area and our district. I know I am the citizen that cares the most about my ward. And if you can bring someone up here that cares more, bring them on up here. But I know I care. And anytime there's an issue that a staff member has, I want to hear about it. I'm open-minded to it, and it serves a few advantages for this city. Number one, a lot of times, department heads are afraid to come to administration for But when I communicate with these department heads, I tell you, one of the best things that happens, you get the unvarnished truth. And sometimes it's scary to have to say that or to be able to do that in certain settings. That's why I wanted to do this in this setting, because this is something not for executive session at all. Now, I want you all to, you know, not get this twisted in a sense. You know, contrary to popular belief, speaking to us does not cause confusion. And I want to make that clear. We are not trying to run the city. Day-to-day operation of this city is the purview of the city manager. We've hired on to handle that job, so we don't have to do that. But any department head or employee who wants to speak to us about an issue, you can reach out to us as you've always been able to, and I want y'all to know that. And you can do that without any threat of retaliation from anybody in this city. Communication is one of the most important things we have to make it happen here. We got a lot of problems in this city, and only through communication can we solve it. The solution to this problem, to all of these city problems and issues that we have, and we do better, better than most, but that solution's not going to come from one person. It's not going to come from Joe Korn or Ambrose Clay or one department. It's going to come from a combination of communication. Our big solutions are going to come from a combination of the police department, Public Works and Parks and Recreation, and they'll come up with the holy cow idea. Why? Because they have enough freedom and comfortable, comfortable feelings to be able to sit down and brainstorm up something where they talk to each other and communicate without restrictions. I don't have an interest in restrictions at all. And, you know, when I was up here before, you know, our former mayor, he would tell me how he would sit and meet, you know, every week with whatever city manager we've had. And I've been through quite a few, from Scott to William Johnson, Terrence, and about four interim city managers. He said one hundred percent of the time, all of them would at some point, and pretty often, approach the mayor with major decisions that they would suggest to, to Jack, well, this is something that doesn't really need to come before the council. Uniformly, Jack would always tell them, or whichever city manager it was, that's not up to me, that's going to have to be bought to this council for them to make a decision on it. And Ms. Tyes, I hope that that is exactly what's going on when you have your weekly meetings. But from what I've witnessed, it has not been going on, because there've been things that we are not, have not been aware of. So I'm saying this because I want us to do a better job with this. I truly care for this city, and I want the best for my city. And we want the employees to feel comfortable here. But we need to do things a certain way, and that means this is not a one-man show by any stretch of the imagination. You know, there are ways to, to lead employees in certain directions. And, you know, you either communicate until it's crystal clear, or you can just close off options. Now, I'm a communications-type of person. I want to talk to everybody, and I want to hear from everybody, whether it's good news or bad news. I want to hear the bad news. Let us know, because if we know about it, we can do something about it to fix it. But if we're restricted from access to you all, or you all are restricted access from us, we can't know what's coming down the pipe, that you might be reluctant to say to somebody else. So if we know about it, we can do something about it. And I just want to make that clear, so that we understand the right direction we're going in, because this direction has been marginal, marginalizing this council slowly but surely, bit by bit. And it's been pretty obvious to everybody up here, so that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Clay, anything to add?
I guess what I, what I'd like to say to address Councilman Korn's comment, in the past, we have had occasions where individual council members would make demands upon direct members of the heads of department, the heads of department. And I believe that we, at one, at one time, we actually interviewed and hired the heads of department. I, I never thought that was a good idea for the council to hire a head of department, because I thought it undercut the authority of the city manager. On the other hand, I do feel that department heads are perfectly, it's perfectly reasonable, I should say, to ask a department head a question. And I know when I ran my R and D organization, I always had the policy, if a board member or whatever, president of the company were to come and ask you a question, you say, "Yes, sir," and answer the question. And then the very next thing you do, you pick up the phone or get on your computer and tell me, "Yes, so and so came, and they asked me this question, and this is what I answered." Because I think the city manager absolutely, positively needs to know what interchange is going on.
Absolutely.
So, and that's, and that's where I am on the issue. I don't think that, and I didn't hear Councilman Korn say that he was looking to think that we should be directing department heads, but rather, we should be open for them to voice concerns. I, he, I didn't hear him say, answer questions, but, and I know what I do with, business with the city manager. Sometimes I send it to her if I think it affects several department heads, and copy those department heads so that they can get working on it, because I know that she's got a ton of things going on, but I expect the answer to come back from her because she's coordinating across the department heads. Now, we're getting a assistant city manager, and that assistant city manager, I look upon their job, and we had a discussion in, in the interview, I look upon their job as to coordinate certain things that need to be coordinated amongst department heads. But I don't want to have them in the way of me communicating with the department heads if I have a simple question, for example, nor do I want the department heads to feel that, as Councilman Korn's saying, if they've got a burning issue, yeah, they can pass it on. What I shouldn't be doing is saying, "Yeah, absolutely, positively, we're going to do this." I don't have the authority to do that. First off, the city manager should be doing it, and secondly, if it's a council issue, it should be coming to the council for a vote. So I, I have a responsibility to my citizens. I, I have a responsibility to my citizens that they can communicate freely with me. I don't go out of my way to solicit comments from department heads. But if a department head wants to communicate something, that, that's fine with me. If I have a specific question that I know that, uh, Mr. Hicks, for example, uh, it's an IT question, now, what, what's, what's going on with the new firewall we're putting in? I heard there's a problem, et cetera, et cetera, and I wanted to pass that on and ask him a question. Uh, I may couns- uh, copy, uh, city manager on it, but I'm, I'm looking for a technical answer from, from Mr. Hicks. I'm not going to direct Mr. Hicks and say, "Well, no, I don't think you ought to buy that one. I want you, I want you to buy that type of firewall." That is totally inappropriate. So that, that's where I am on the issue.
Councilman Allen?
I have, I've always communicated straight with departments or officers or truck drivers or, or anybody else, and, and I'll, I'll continue to do that. I do think that sometimes we can muddy the waters a little bit if the departments take what we say and that they have to do it right then.
Absolutely.
If, if I were to go to, and I'm just picking out somebody, Michelle, you're the first one I saw, so. If, if I were to go to Michelle and, and ask for something and say, "Can you look into this?" I don't want her to have a feeling that she has to do it right then. But at the same time, if Councilman Gay goes to Michelle and asks her to look into something, and Councilman Clay and Councilman Kerns, we all go and ask Michelle to, to look into something, that kind of muddy, muddies, muddies the water a little bit and makes it, makes it hard for the city manager to manage sometimes. So the city manager needs to be aware, when we go and talk to somebody, we need to be working with the city manager, letting her know, maybe she's already working on the same problem. So we need to do our part in communications with the city manager as well as the departments, as well as each other. You know, talk about things, so. I have, I, I don't have any problems going to anybody and talking to them, so.
Councilman Gay?
Well, yes, so, you know, I was just sitting here thinking, and what a difference a day can make. There was a time I couldn't even have a comment without getting cut off. Now, we can just talk so freely, I'm just sitting back enjoying this life. But no, the relationship I've had with our city directors has actually been very positive. I mean, I don't want to call anybody out, but I have real good conversations with the, the city directors. They, um, I'm sorry, city, the, different directors, you too, but they've been, they've been spirited conversations. They've never been considered to be that we're harassing them. In fact, they teach me and we share, exchange. I always try and copy the city manager. And sometimes I counsel, I'll copy mayor and council when the city, when they're not doing it fast enough. So, but that's, that's pretty much my relationship. I, I will say respectfully that, you know, the ma- the city manager works at the leisure, a pledge, the word is pledge, of the council. And, and it's that serious, it's, it's at our pleasure. So, and that's real. But the point is, is that, um, you know, I think, uh, Councilman, uh, Kern for that, you know, for his leadership in bringing that out so that we can have that conversation. And I also want to thank Councilman Wyatt for his kind words this evening and to Larry. Thank you, gentlemen. That's it. I, that was my council minutes, too, by the way.
To see that all laws and ordinances are enforced. To see that the business and affairs of the city are efficiently organized and handled. To exercise administrative control over all regular departments and divisions of the City of College Park, including the appointment, removal, and disciplining of department heads. Provided, however, that the city manager shall not have or exercise any control over the College Park Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Recreation Commission, or other special board, commission, committee, authority, or body set up under any general law or any ordinance or agreement of the mayor and council. To appoint as required department heads for departments authorized by the mayor and council. Department heads with the approval of the city manager shall appoint and remove all subordinate officers and employees in their respective offices and departments. Provided, however, they shall be guided in their actions by the City of College Park Civil Service laws and regulations. Upon failure of such department heads and/or the city manager to act in making such appointments and recommendations, the mayor and council shall have full authority and power to act. Nothing herein shall prevent the mayor and council from creating, abolishing, consolidating, altering, or modifying departments. To attend the meetings of the mayor and council with the right to take part in all discussions but having no vote. To recommend to the mayor and council for adoption such measur- measures as she may deem necessary or expedient. To prepare and submit to the mayor and council an annual budget. To keep the mayor and council fully advised as to the financial condition and needs of the city. To make and execute all lawful contracts on behalf of the City of College Park as to matters within her jurisdiction, except such as may be otherwise provided by law or by ordinance or resolution of the mayor and council. Provided that no contract, purchase, or obligation involving more than $10,000 shall be valid or binding until provided by the mayor and council. And provided further that without approval of the mayor and council, neither the city manager nor other officer or employee shall in any calendar month expend or obligate for any purpose any sum or sums in excess of the monthly budget or one-twelfth of the annual budget therefore as fixed by the mayor and council. To make the mayor and council monthly written reports showing her acts and doings, the operations of the city, and all city disbursements, purchases, contracts, and obligations. To perform such other duties as may be prescribed by ordinance or resolution of the mayor and council. And finally, to give bond in the penal sum fixed by the mayor and council with surety approved by the mayor and council, payable to the City of College Park and its successors and assigns for the benefits of the said City of College Park and for the use and benefit of the public to secure and indemnify the City of College Park and each and all of the public by reason of her default, misfeasance, malfeasance, and/or non-feasance in the performance of her duties. The premium of such bond shall be paid by the City of College Park. That is the job description, description of our city manager. And all of us should be here supporting her in doing it, because it's a big old job. A big job. And I don't think anyone needs six bosses. I think our charter is clear about how this city should operate and who is in charge of the day-to-day operations of it. And for the last 30 days, I think we're close to 30, is that right?
Today? Today is 30.
Today is 30. Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
I think the best thing that we can do as a body is support Ms. Tias in her work, because she's got a heavy lift. And anything that we can do to further those goals is something that we as a body should do. We do have one additional item that we fail to add on the additions and such. We have a motion for a budget amendment.
Do you want to read the motion?
The motion would be, uh, a motion to amend the 2021 budget to affect the salary increase for the police department, uh, and the public works department in the following amounts. Three hundred and six thousand, uh, for police, fourteen thousand for public works, uh, such a amendment to be effective immediately.
I believe that'd be the FY22 budget? You said 21?
Yes.
Okay. So FY22 budget in the, uh, following amounts. Uh, and I believe everyone had an opportunity to hear that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Kern, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous.
Hopefully that addresses, uh, some of the comments that we've heard earlier in the meeting. And that is in the current budget.
City attorney's report?
Nothing seen in the ground there.
City manager's report?
Uh, I'm going to reach out to you all to confirm, uh, the, the new dates for the council retreat. We're confirming the facility, we have the facilitator.
Thank you, Ms. Tias. Report of mayor and council, Councilman Clay.
I only have, uh, just a general comment tonight. I attended the Faber Track Meet on the weekend on Sunday. I attended the, uh, wine stroll. And I've seen a lot of things happening in the Main Street, management, CPMSA, Main Street Association for Maine and Virginia. There is a whole new spirit in the city. And I think that was brought up a little bit during public comment today. And it's, it's really great to be a part of it. Uh, I think we've got some real challenges. We have double-digit inflation in the Atlanta metro area. It may not be quite there yet in the, in the country in general, but it sure is yet here. And double-digit inflation hits hardest the people that are in the economic pay area, the lowest economic pay area. Uh, it's a much better percentage of their income that has to go to housing and gasoline and food than it is in the higher wage areas. And I think we need to take that into account. And I think, uh, we will take that into account. And, uh, I am just very encouraged listening to the Flit, Flint River, uh, commentary and the Willingham corridor on the Flint River and seeing all the innovation that's going on. We have a, a lot of challenges and to, uh, that point, I think my email probably has quadrupled in the last several years. Uh, we have multiple housing developments going on. We have the exten- outstanding art development and, uh, workforce housing development going on at the Methodist Church. There's just a tremendous amount of activity. And I'm very appreciative that, uh, our city manager, Darnetta, has, uh, joined us. I've had a number of conversations with her. And, uh, I love her attention to process. I'm kind of a process nut myself for, for my history in industry. So I think we're going to become a well-oiled machine. I had a neighbor over the weekend that decided, uh, they wanted, a hu- husband and wife decided that they wanted to have their own cleanup on Lyle. And I went to that cleanup and cleaned up a bunch more trash. So we had a citywide, but now you had some, somebody on their own sponsoring that. So we've got a whole new spirit in the city going on right now. And a lot of development. And we just have to be careful when there's a lot of activity, that we carefully look at everybody coming to us that wants to buy our land or help us out with this or help us out with that. And I think we're in a good position to do that. So it's a good problem to have. And so I'm, I guess what I'm trying to communicate is that I am very optimistic uh, for the future of our city. But we also have to be very much in attention to detail. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, Councilman Kern?
Uh, a couple of things. I want to thank, first of all, Melissa, Public Works, uh, and Randy in particular for, uh, freshening up the park out there at 2900 Camp Creek. These folks came in over the weekend and did a great job. There was a, a birthday shower there for a very, uh, special resident of mine. Uh, some of y'all are aware of the incident that occurred with, uh, Mr. Anderson's daughter. I won't go into that, but, uh, Melissa, thank you so much. Um, I know there's some drainage issues out there that you guys are going to get it, get into, but, uh, uh, that is the way I want to see our residents treated. That was first class all the way. You brought in the team, they made the fixes and, 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 uh, they were very, very impressed by your department. I always say Public Works, dollar for dollar, and, you know, with, with no slight to any other department. But dollar for dollar in terms of sweat equity. And I'm talking about sweat, y'all. It's hard, I, I would see any department, it'd be hard-pressed to come up here and show me that they're putting in more sweat equity, muscle, and work and labor, uh, into, uh, this city than Public Works. So I definitely want to thank you for that. Couple other things. Uh, Ms. Tias, I know we mentioned yard signs. Uh, not yard signs. Campaign signs, uh, we buy ugly house signs, signs on telephone poles, uh, signs in the right-of-way. I know it's campaign season and a lot of people out here campaigning. But a while ago, we set an ordinance that said, we did not want to litter our city with campaign signs. Now, we also said, uh, that we would allow campaign signs on the right of, on the right-of-way uh, 30 days prior to an election. And, uh, the election is May 24th, I believe, so. I, I, you know, there are a lot of politics at play in every city, and everybody's got their favorites, and some signs are still up and some are down. But, Ms. Tias, we got to be fair across the board. I want them all going out of the right-of-ways. And I know a little something about sign dropping. But I want to see that taken care of. This entire city, every sign and every right-of-way could be taken down within about a day and a half, because we're very small. So I want to make sure that's done so that, you know, there's no, that, that, you know, we, we want to follow the ordinances that we have. Couple other things. Great events this weekend. I, I went by the beginning of the wine stroll. Um, I was at the, uh, stadium, uh, for the, uh, what was it, yesterday? Right, yesterday, uh, with the track team. Great event, great turnout. It was very exciting. Councilman Clay, you're right, there is something good in the air in this city. Ms. Tias, I think you're a big part of that. There's such things as good luck charms, and she is going to do a great job for us. And folks, I don't want y'all to take my comments out of context. I want to explain something to y'all. She is in charge of these city employees and departments. Do not feel like, because you didn't like something that she said, and if she, and if she's doing her job, there's going to be some things y'all are not going to like. But don't think that you can just come to us and we're going to say, uh, uh, "Don't do that, do this." That's not where I'm getting at. We hire her for her expertise of this city and for her to use her judgment for that. So I, I want to make that clear. Couple other things. I know we're going to be talking about this, I guess, coming up, hopefully at the next couple of meetings. I, I ask about, um, looking at our apartment ordinances in terms of tightening things up in regards to owners. So I'm hoping that's upcoming, uh, on a workshop or something, uh, hopefully, uh, Ms. Tias, at some point. I really, I think that's really important to, to, to really getting things together here. Well, one thing about the stadium, I did, I did see, I, I like to make sure that we have a vendor out there for, for food, because there were a lot of folks that wanted food out there. And I understand we used to, we would use proof of the pudding. But, uh, when you have 400 people out there and people were asking our police officers, "Well, can we get a drink somewhere, some snacks?" And the closest place they could go was up to the convenience store up by the church. And that, that was not a good look. The other issue there, and again, that was a great event, and all of these events are great. One of the biggest issues we still have is parking. Parking in this city is one of our biggest issues, and we have got to figure out something. Ambrose, I know you remember when Barbara Coffey was here. And I told her, I, I said, I, I, I really suggested to her, I said, I said, "We need to build a city parking deck somewhere between City Hall for Main Street, for the sports complex, the baseball field and track." And, you know, she, she said it's pretty cost prohibitive to build a, a deck. And, you know, my idea in my head was to build a deck on top of the public safety parking deck and maybe put three, three stories on that thing. And she said it was going to be a pretty huge amount of cost. And I look back at that now, because that was coming right out of the, the recession, and it was pretty cheap to build just about anything then. And, you know, we could have got that thing built for about a third of the price that, that it would have cost us to build that thing now. But at some point, I, I, we really need to figure out something for this parking, because it would only benefit all of our businesses, uh, recreation and, and just services in general. Last thing I have in, in- Last thing I have, and, and to communication in the public comments here. You know, about folks continuing to speak. There is never been, and never will be, a resident that I will cut off from speaking regardless of the time limit. And here's the reason why. Folks, and I, before I got elected, I was a resident that came up here and spoke my mind a lot of the times. The most important part of this meeting is public comment. I'm gonna say it again. There is no agenda item more important than hearing what you all have to say, and hearing every word of it. When I was a Fulton County Commissioner, we had issues that came up that were pretty controversial. And we knew they were gonna be, and we knew we were gonna catch it, uh, when the meeting came up. We had one issue that came up, and the meeting started, and the clerk, we said, "Well, do we have any public comments?" They said, "Commissioners, we have eleven hundred comments." This commission sat, we sat for five and a half hours. Do y'all hear me? Before we got to the agenda items. But we listened to every word that everybody had to say. Why? Because at the end of the day, we're elected by the people. The department heads are elected by the people, the city manager. Everything you see here was paid for by you, the tax-paying public. So there's nothing more important than that. Now, that's just me. You know, when we went from three minutes, we do three minutes, but we got this one-minute thing for people that want to speak up. You know, I'm never gonna cut anybody off. Now, if the rest of y'all want to, that's your prerogative. But you won't hear me cutting anybody off. And you, now, you know, we're not gonna be in here nine hours, but everybody has a, a word to say sometimes. And it's nothing more important than someone that needs to speak their piece. That is, that is so important in any relationship. So I, I just want to mention that, and I want us to be cognizant of that. And, uh, I think that would make for a better community. But I want y'all to know, we want to communicate across department heads, citizens, and we need more communication in this city, not less. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Allen?
Okay. First of all, let me echo what you said. I think citizens' comments are very, very important. And anybody should have the ability and want to get up and say something, say something. And we'll listen to every single word you have to say. Let me congratulate Woodward, Tri-Cities, all the recreation programs. I think it was great to see all the, the little kids here. The Faver Fact, Track Team. I was out there the other day, and they said, "Okay, five and six-year-olds line up. We're gonna do sixteen hundred meters." And I'm thinking, five and six-years-old going four times around this track? And let me tell you, they didn't miss a beat. It was very, very interesting. And all of those kids were dedicated. Parents were freezing, but there was about six, seven-hundred parents there with blankets, cheering, watching all the kids. It was, it was a good thing to see. Wine Stroll, uh, the Jazz Concert, uh, Renee, Main Street, just a fabulous program. We had another program with the Pollinators, put on by PBS. The Jazz Concert, if any, if any of y'all missed it, you really missed a great program. Eldridge Sims, the Jazz Quartet, were fantastic. I'd like, I'd like to see them come back some other time. They were, they were fantastic. So thank you very much. The rec programs, we've heard tonight, we've heard them talk about. I wrote down, there's basketball. We've talked a little bit about the swimming pools. We've talked about baseball. We've talked about golf. There was a track meet. A lot of things are happening that are very, very good here in College Park. And I've, I've got a little thing here that says, "Things are good." The police department, uh, we've heard everybody, uh, we've responded. I've heard from several policemen that I didn't even know the last few days, just talking and asking how things were. I was in the park the other day, and one of the policemen, uh, I want to give him a pat on the back, and, and you guys, and, and ladies, uh, Chief McCrory, if you're still here, Officer Pazey came up to me and said, I was over Barrett Park, walking around, and he said, "Are you looking for something? Is everything okay?" And I said, "No, I'm just a councilman, and I was just kind of looking at the pavilions." He said, "Oh, I didn't know you were a councilman." But the fact that he came up, got out, stopped out of his car, said hello, that's, those are good things that are happening in College Park. So thank him for that, and that's happened two or three times here in College Park recently. So people are getting out, people are talking to folks. And I will do my, my police comment right now. It's getting warmer weather, uh, crimes are picking up, people are getting out. So lock your cars, take your telephones, take your laptops, take your iPads. Don't leave them where people can see them in your car, because they're gonna get broken into. So make sure you lock your car, and make sure that you're, you're, you're not making it easy for these criminals to get on there, get in the cars. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Gage?
Okay, good evening again. Uh, is there an update on the homestead tax from the attorney or the clerk?
Councilman, I, I don't have a update beyond what, uh, Mr. Bolia, uh, said previously. Uh, he indicated that, and I know you had a concern about, uh, Crossover Day. You kind of reached out to him right before Crossover Day. And since this is local legislation, um, we didn't have to worry about that so much, um, because we could still get it passed. He remains confident that we're gonna get it done this session. And so, um, uh, Bolia's a pretty talented guy, so I, I expect it to get it done.
And Winston, I, I spoke to the, the whip, uh, William Bodie, who's one of our representatives. He did say that they're working through that, and it looks good, and it's, it's got bipartisan support. So I think that's, I think it's gonna go.
That's good to know. I, I just, the lady with the, with Finding the Flint, just, I can't get this out my mind. I wasn't even gonna talk about it, and I guess we just freestyled it tonight, because everybody's just talking and... But, you know, she was, we, we saw her presentation at BID twice, and then her presentation tonight. And then I noticed there was a study, you know, um, when I came out of fifteen years of healthcare, I started doing, uh, studies. And, uh, I have to go to county governments, or city governments, finance directors, and try and do these studies. I said, "Look, I'll save you ten percent, uh, so if you have a five-million-dollar budget, I'll show you how you can save ten percent. You pay me fifty grand." I think I got one study in two years. And so once, uh, I stopped by my mom's house, I had this study I was so proud of. I mean, I had worked so hard on this study. And my mom's was like, "Listen." She said, "It looks great, but, uh, now all you gotta do is paint yourself white." That's what my mom said. So that's my leeway into what I was about to say about Finding the Flint. So Camp Truitt has been in my ward. When I moved in in nineteen ninety-eight, Camp Truitt was there. My wife pulled up on Herschel Road, we saw all these kids, we're like, "This is gonna be a great community. I cannot wait." And then they lit, they moved, and they bought their own camp. It's called Rock Eagle. And then the leaders of Fulton County, it was John Eves, it was Emma Darnell, and then it was William Bill Edwards. And then it was this body. And for probably since nineteen ninety-eight, I may have spent every year on trying to do something with Camp Truitt. So let me tell you this about Camp Truitt. The Atlanta Botanical Garden is eighteen acres. It's only eighteen acres, but it has an endowment of two hundred million dollars. It's only eighteen acres. Two hundred million dollars, and Camp Truitt is eight, is thirty acres. Botanical Garden is nineteen acres, I'm sorry. My point in saying all that is, uh, it's a jewel that has never been taken advantage of by, by, by anyone. And, um, it's just a shame. So lately, it just happened upon me that there was a conversation, and someone wanted to do a project that was similar suited to Camp Truitt. So I introduced them to us, to Economic Development, the guy who just walked out the door. And it went on the BID agenda, and it never came back. It never came back. And so I took it to the Fulton County. And Fulton County, certain leaders of Fulton County felt that it was a great project. And then, now I'm talking about Finding the Flint, I'm talking about forced, I'm talking about four presentations. And this body has said, "We're gonna get behind you." And they gonna ask for some money. But Camp Truitt, which, I even took Woodward, I took Woodward out there. I took Dr. Gully out there. I called the Boy Scouts of America. I met with Tom Coleman, the lobbyist. I had lunch with him. Years and years of trying to bring people to Camp Truitt. And so we finally got a little agenda. And so when we finally get somebody who taken interest, what do we get? We get a whole day of checking out our criminal background history. Are we thugs? Are we, are we, are we corrupt? That's what we got. I'm sixty-two years old, Ms. Tyus. I'm sixty-two years old. Then Jimmy Carter got a thing called, uh, what is it called? What do you call it, sir? Where you build those houses? What is it called? The Habitat for Humanity. This man, ninety years old, done built over twenty thousand houses. I get one house and spend two years with the DA. So I guess all I'm just trying to say is that we got to start coming together, and we got to use these director jobs, you guys making these hundreds of thousands of dollars. And you're gonna have to use your intellectual knowledge, your blessings you done got from God, all these good jobs y'all got, and y'all gotta, y'all gotta make all of College Park come up. Because twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine hundred Camp Creek is black people at or below poverty. They Title I schools. They people walking around, they ain't even got twenty dollars in their pocket. And until you fix that, you can pay all the pollies as you want. Because scared money don't make money. And until you get these people some money... And so all these contracts, these people be coming here getting these hundreds of thousand-dollar contract, all these ninety thousand dollars, these nine million dollars to pave a road, two, uh, two million dollars to lower a pipeline. And then you got all these people on Camp Creek can't come up. And then when people like me, would to try and, and find things to develop, didn't y'all wanna, don't even want to support us? So I guess I'm talking to whatever, whoever listening, but that's what I gotta say tonight.
Thank you, sir. Last week, I had the opportunity to, uh, go to the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. Had a great opportunity to connect with our elected officials, um, with Congressman Scott there. And you can see that the president of the National League of Cities, who is also our neighbor in Union City, uh, and Congresswoman, Congresswoman Williams, and also had a chance to connect with Senators Warnock and Ossoff as well. And, and my message was consistent, uh, that we need help on this level. That we are going to be asking for certain things from our elected representatives, including, um, ask for water and sewer, public safety. Also for the Six West project that is so integral to our growth as a community. And so, uh, it was a, a great opportunity to learn more about, uh, some of the infrastructure plans, or the, the Infrastructure Act itself, uh, and a, a great time to connect with, uh, leaders in other communities across the country. So, uh, wanna thank everyone for that opportunity. And, uh, Ms. Tyus and I have had some conversations about some of the things that I learned, and, uh, we're, we're, we're just, as, as we said, things are good, and we're, we're trying to make them better. But we're just, uh, just learning as we go along. So, uh, looking forward to that. Want to thank the folks from National Church Residences, uh, who sat down with Councilman Allen and I this morning to, uh, talk a little bit more about Princeton Court and the plans for Princeton Court. They've got some exciting, uh, exciting plans over there. And I think that they are moving in the right direction as well to, to benefit the residents of Princeton Court. And echoing everyone's sentiments about the wine stroll, and the Pollinators, and all the great things that are happening in our city. And I do want to say a special thank you to Eldridge Sims, because, uh, he was one of the folks who, uh, came to one of my one-on-ones and talked about how he wanted to be more involved in our community and bring, uh, jazz education to our youth. And so that sort of started the conversation, and I said, "Michelle Johnson's your person." And I think the, the two of them connected, and, and so it has been a great, uh, relationship for our community, and I look forward to, uh, Mr. Sims, uh, contributing even more. And speaking of which, um, my March date is blocked up, already it's booked up. But April eighth, I still have slots for my one-on-ones. So if you are interested in sitting down and talking, uh, you can reach out to our assistant, Lisa Swan, uh, at four oh four, six six nine, thirty seven fifty-five. And, uh, we can chat about anything you like. So that is all I have. Um, I believe we need a motion to approve the executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Clay, you made the motion. Councilman Karn, you seconded. Is that correct?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Those executive session minutes are approved. It is nine thirty-six. We are adjourned.